Six o'clock, April eighteenth, twenty twenty-two, regular meeting of the Windsor Heights City Council roll call.
Susan Skerries, Joseph Jones, Michael Libby, Lauren Campbell, and Teresa Harms is absent.
She will be joining us in a little bit. Door now.
The United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
What the agenda?
Susan Skerries, Joseph Jones, Michael Libby, Lauren Campbell, and Teresa Harms.
Public forum, this is the time set aside for comments from the public on topics of city business other than those listed on the agenda. No action may be taken. Please come to the podium, state your name, address for the record, and keep your comments to no more than five minutes.
Mayor, council staff, good evening. My name's Kelly Swenson. I work for Mid-American Energy. I'm here tonight to thank you for being a great community partner. Every year we select communities throughout our service territory to be recipients of our Trees Week grant program. And please to announce this year that the community was selected and I presented the check for a thousand dollars. So those funds can be used to plant trees in public spaces and look forward to seeing where they're going. And if there's an opportunity for Mid-American volunteers to come out and be a partner in some of the planting, we would certainly welcome that. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. We'll let you know where we're gonna put the troops. Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, consent agenda, motion.
Second.
I just need to note that I should not vote for the minutes since I was on here.
We'll pull those out and vote on those separately. So we want to do all any consent except for the minutes.
Okay, so. All right, if you could retract your motions. All right, consent agenda for, item four, consent agenda minus. Item A, so we will be voting on four, B, and C, motion to approve. So move. Roll call.
Susan Skerries, Joseph Jones, Michael Libby, Lauren Campbell, and Teresa Harms.
Item four A, improvement of the regular city council meeting on April fourth, twenty twenty-two.
I'll second. And I also asked that we put in there, I was contacted by two residents that asked me what comments were made. And it just said, comment made by Mr. Libby that Mr. Skerries talked about, then Mr. Libby talked about, Mayor Jones. And so they would like to know what comment it was. So I don't know how we want to word that, but just comment. They didn't feel that we were transparent in what we were saying because it just says comment and they wanted me to expand on the comment. And then they said, well, why aren't we writing that? They said, well, I don't really know.
I don't know what task practices fit for the level of detail on the public forum comments, since they're non-action items. I know it's, I know this is.
It has seesaw back and forth. Usually, I remember when I first started here, it was like so-and-so spoke in favor of or opposed to, and then it was just a subject. And then other times it got to be, that got to be more lengthy, and now it's kind of back to the way I feel is how it should be.
I just think it needs to be consistent with whatever, whatever comment is made with regards to comments in public forums needs to be consistent for all speakers.
Well, then I think that requires a specific motion. So Mr. Skerries, the question is, what is the comment? You want to make a motion as to what should be included?
I can make that. How would, how would this be worded in the correct manner? Do we just say what was said? Okay, so.
That's what the ask is. And yes, you have to say what was said.
I think you could maybe, because I haven't, Harms made the, the motion correct.
And I seconded.
Right. So if you maybe want to ask if Ms. Harms would be.
Ms. Harms, would you be okay? So then, so I spoke in opposition to a shooting comment made by Mr. Libby. Mayor, Mayor Jones discussed the shooting comment with Mr. Libby in private. Mr. Libby apologized for his shooting comment.
So I'm adding shooting three times is what I'm understanding, right before comment?
I guess so. I mean, one time and then comment is fine with me.
Okay.
Just as long as I don't have to explain everything.
Second.
I seconded that.
Are you?
Oh, I.
You moved.
Okay.
Good for everybody?
I didn't get who seconded. Skerries, Joseph Jones. Michael Libby. Lauren Campbell.
Yes.
And Teresa Harms.
Five A, consideration and/or discussion of Metro Waste Collection Day Change.
Mr. Mayor, Cassie Riley from Metro Waste is here to present the recommendation of Metro Waste.
Thank you for having me this evening. I appreciate your time. I am here to speak specifically to the collection day change that has been requested. As we mentioned, in the context that was in place July first, twenty twenty-two, for the collection of garbage, garbage and recycling. Past contracts were expiring, and so Metro Waste Authority put out an RFP in the fall, and the results of that were for waste connections to win the bid for garbage and recycling. Garbage and yardage collection in Windsor Heights, and then waste management will continue under a new contract as the recycling hauler. Anytime a hauler takes on a service or a new community, they're always looking to balance their routes to make sure they have the optimal number of stops in a day that's realistic for a truck that can appropriately serve all the residents that are expecting service that day. And so in their evaluation, these connections have only request to change the collection day in Windsor Heights from Friday to Monday. Now Metro Waste Authority's over twenty years of experience in managing contracts strongly feels that having a consistent setup date for all services is best from a residential standpoint. And so while we appreciate the waste connections request, our second call is to waste management to see if they can accommodate that same schedule for recycling collections, in which case they have. So all haulers for garbage, yardage, and recycling are on the same page so that they can consistently serve citizens of Windsor Heights on Mondays for collection for all three services. So as with any change like that, there is a learning curve, of course, and I want to ensure that Metro Waste Authority has a robust communication staff. We're very closely with the city to communicate early and often in multiple forms, such as direct mail, water bill inserts, weekly alerts, direct emails. And we can run the gamut as, as much as we need to in order to ensure success. I might, it's also my experience in changes like these that the haulers are a bit forgiving for the first few weeks, just as residents get used to things and we get them on. But you support and walk alongside in that journey. This contract is, does have a management term of seven years with two three-year optional extensions, which in my experience, we've worked with waste connections and waste management very closely for many years, and I don't anticipate not extending those contracts. And so I say that to assure you that this is a request that we can come through regularly. With that, I welcome any questions or specifics that you'd like to review.
So what happens with the magnets? I, I guess I haven't looked at them close enough. Because I can never, I rely on, we rely on our good neighbors that actually know what's going on with the recycling. So I just stick my head out the door to figure out if recycling, the rest of the neighborhood has it out, then I know it's recycling. But how does that work? Do we have to change our magnets at all? Because again, I don't.
That's what you have us for. That's okay. So those magnets actually lead into what color of lid is on a recycling cart. And that lid color for Windsor Heights would not be changing. And so what it's indicating to the resident is if it's a black lid week, meaning this color is on the top of your cart and the color on the magnet is that color, which are part of the, on whatever your collection day is. And so the magnets wouldn't change or would discover it's on the top of the carts for the.
With the change of July first, and that's a Friday, and then it's a holiday weekend, so the very first collection, the new one would be delayed a day, I'm assuming, Monday. Observing on the fourth and then Tuesday, but it seems like it's gonna be, I mean, I know you guys are great commissioners, but it seems like it's gonna be quite the, the week this much thing is over. Any, any concerns that you see with that or?
We can certainly adjust because the contract goes into place July first. Actually, the yard waste color changed April fourth. So there was a provision in the contract that the yard waste calling component of it would begin April fourth, just because of the nature of how that season runs. So waste connection started picking up yard waste in Windsor Heights a few weeks ago. And so they're ready for the change whenever we're ready for the change, and I'm sure waste management will come along as well. So if the city and Metro Waste Authority felt like it would be better, maybe do it a couple of weeks before the holiday or something like that, or a week after, we could certainly negotiate that.
Sure, they're not doing you on Friday, you know, right?
Thank you. Good thing you.
How long has it been on Fridays? Anyone recall?
I don't think it's lived since I've been here, it must be two thousand twelve.
ASI's been the hauler since the last set of contracts went into place, and those are probably seventy, ten years, I would guess.
In my time here, it's never been anything different.
Yeah. We've had needed day changes like this before. Like I said, there's always been a few residents who kind of missed the memo, even though you've communicated it a hundred times, and we know how to walk alongside and help people.
So if we, so for me, because I would forget, I'd be someone, if we did forget, then would we be contacting you or would we, would you put on there, this is what happens if you forget? Or, you know, hey, we understand, it takes a little bit to, to put this into your routine. So how would you go about, you know, kind of handling when residents like me space off that we changed?
Well, the great news is when you forget on Friday, it would actually be your collection day the following weekday. So it kind of worked in people's favor. We have a great experience, just like we do with composted carts. If people haven't gotten their renewal sticker in the mail yet, or they just kind of spaced out renewing it, there's a three-week grace period at the beginning of that. And a couple of years ago, Metro Waste Authority oversaw the switch for, for municipalities in the metro to change over to contract management with Metro Waste Authority. Going away from one city, I think they've been with the same hauler for almost twenty years, with a direct contract with the city and the hauler. And so that was a really big shift for them and their residents, and required cart swaps and a lot, a lot of mistakes. I'm glad that we're not talking about that now.
We are awesome.
Yeah. But we, we got through it, right? And just like that, even if the residents of Windsor Heights are noticing a shift in the time of day, that their yard waste cart is tipped, and they're a couple of that surprise, and we've been able to coach them through it, and either get the hauler to come back or just coach them for the following collection day to be prepared. And so we've really worked closely with people, and it's a situation where it's like, you can't, all residents kind of get a one-time get out of jail free card, if you will. And so if we don't have like repetitive notes of late setups or just an indifference to the schedule, most times the hauler will just come back. Especially in a situation like this, or a good, I, I mean, I need to negotiate this, but I'd say within three to five weeks, we would negotiate with the haulers to be much more forgiving about.
Because either you just find one eager resident who understands things, and everybody else just looks out the door. Yes.
I thought that was supposed to be the council person.
It's my husband's job. He's not here, I can run it off on him.
I don't know, council, is there any, I think, strong objections to this proposal?
Will you take action on it?
It says it's consideration slash. And I, I would say if, if there is going to be the, the consideration or, you know, the motion, most important thing is that this is communicated to residents frequently, and something in the mail. I mean, social media is not going to cut it. I would say most whole physical pieces of media to inform residents as soon as possible this change is going to happen. And then, you know, attention, when, we'll, we'll do our part on social media, I assume, but it is going to have to be something in the mail. More than once, I would say, most likely, to sort of, you know, and I, I read in there that the hauler would pay for that as well, so that would be wonderful.
Right?
Other than that, that's the only thing that I would see would be the most important thing, would be to communicate it to residents frequently and as soon as possible.
So should we move to? And move to approve?
So Lauren's point. Is this set for the first of July, or should it be in motion? We should perhaps put it two weeks early.
I will need to consult with the haulers a little bit to determine if they can start it two weeks early or the week after. And then I certainly can communicate back to city staff and keep you guys abreast too, how that kind of flushes out. I am apprehensive to speak on their behalf and commit to a specific date, but they, they are very grateful for even the consideration of it because it really will balance things across the board for them as we work to serve the twenty-three communities that Metro Waste Authority oversees these kinds of services for. So they'll be a minimal to that conversation.
I think I understand the spirit of the council this evening on that term, so I'll work with Cassie and her staff, and it'll either be prior to the holiday weekend or a week delay.
So do you, Dennis, do you need anything more than just the, the motion to approve or?
Motion to approve is.
Okay. With the understanding you're gonna try to be flexible with the July one timeframe?
There'll be lots of, there'll be social media.
All right.
You'll be annoyed with the information. Thank you.
Thank you.
Susan Skerries, Joseph Jones, Michael Libby, Lauren Campbell, and Teresa Harms.
Five B, consideration of proposal from Boltman Bank to complete a review and update of the city zoning code for a cost not to exceed thirty-five thousand dollars, thirty-five thousand three hundred and sixty-nine dollars, and authorize Mayor Jones to sign all the necessary documents. Dennis.
Mr. Mayor, the, the issue of updating the city's development standards came up back with, I think it was the tiles online development and the requirement to mandate a brick facade material for the new structures. And Aaron went through the process of actually drafting up an amendment to the code, but it also begged the question, since there are a number of occasions in our current code that are either outdated or conflicting or confusing. And I have heard since joining the city that a code update, total overhaul, it is long overdue, and I agree with that. So instead of taking these pieces piecemeal and trying to do the, follow the required public notification, and having the public hearings one item at a time, it is beneficial for us to undertake an entire code revision using a professional planning firm like Boltman Bank to guide us in that process. There is a prescribed process for updating a municipal zoning code. It is heavy with public notice requirements and public participation, considering the effort and the notice requirements and the staff time that would be necessary. It's more appropriate, in my opinion, to undertake this as one project, not piecemeal. So Boltman Bank has the experience in this field. They have other municipal clients that have also done this in the past that we can borrow that expertise from. And so I'm confident they can successfully manage this to its completion. Rose is here this evening who will serve as the senior planner on this project. And if she, if you have any questions on what it means to undertake a code revision, she's here this evening. She can answer those questions. She can talk more pointedly to some of the key issues that would be important to the council.
So I guess, would we do this kind of, because I'm assuming that we would have to read through all this, so it would be a lot of reading on our part. So would we kind of do it in sections so that we're not trying to read that whole big code? I mean, I can go to sleep reading that quite easily.
Yeah, Rose will speak to that, but yes, I think that basically this is, this is constructed to accommodate however the council would like to proceed. And in certain portions of the code, you're going to be able to whip through it pretty quickly because there are some new sections that, you know, are pretty self-evident. At, at the same time, this has to go through the Planning and Zoning Commission, so they are going to get their first shot at that. And there are going to be red lines, and we're going to try to make it as easily as possible for anybody to understand what is remaining and what is being changed, what's being taken out, what's being added. But Rose, do you want to come on up and just kind of explain that point?
Hi, good evening. I'm Rose Schroeder. As Dennis mentioned, I'm a senior planner at Boltman Bank. So the, the way we typically would approach a code update is that, as Dennis mentioned, there are some sections that are very procedural, that are very based in legal findings. And we move pretty quickly right through those. Things particularly in many communities, but especially in my opinion, in Windsor Heights case, the development standards are one of the things that are not well-defined. It often comes into question, and it, it really needs some clarity. So things like that, we would work through in sections. They would go through planning commission first. We, we do absolutely red line, red line, red line things, and we do that so that there is never any question on where we started from, what we've proposed changing, and sort of where it came from. So we will keep all of our notes, whether it's coming from a statute, or it was public feedback we received, or it's something from a planning commission or maybe one of you, we keep track of all of that. And as we're going through the process in each section, however we break that up, we will summarize that in a memo, and it will literally say, section such and such said this, we're proposing that it says this, and then we'll explain all of those changes and why we did that. Now, some of those we will move through chapter by chapter, but there are many pieces, at least today, in the development-related sections of your code that refer back and forth. And so there are some sections that we will need to take together and that we would suggest final kind of adoption of until the end to make sure we have all those conflicts out and make sure it's doing just exactly what the community wants it to do. Procedurally, a code update generally is straightforward. The content absolutely varies from community to community. It's not a copy and paste from one, one community to another, even in the same metro, we need it to work for Windsor Heights. So although we're not going to reinvent the wheel on some things, we want to be very sensitive to the context of development that is happening. So that was a very long-winded answer to your question. It will be incremental, but we will make sure we take the pieces together at a time that we need to, as well as any that we feel are missing for modernizing to today's code.
Now, would this require us to have work sessions, or is this something that would not require that, that would just be something that's sent out to us? And then we can easily discuss here, how does, what is your thoughts or your vision on that?
Yep. So we have done sort of both scenarios that you just described. The way I have it scoped here, we would initial, we would essentially use the planning commission as kind of that working group. And then you would be seeing essentially the drafts and the remarks coming back from that. We can certainly do a workshop here. We can do an incremental, you know, presentation, a section. We probably wouldn't, in my recommendation, would be not to act on those pieces separately, but if we wanted to have a presentation and a workshop as we went along, we have certainly done that. It really depends on how much or how little in the nitty-gritty of the code details that you as a council want to be involved.
Thank you.
May I answer any other questions in general?
Question. So quickly, what, how often should a council update or do maintenance, if you will? Because I think that's what we've failed to do on the code, because I know like the legislature does it every year. It's, I'm intimately involved in that process, but so.
Yeah. So I don't, I don't feel like there is a set date, but what I will tell you when we approach it, absolutely, a couple of the fundamental things we look at before anything else is we will do a review to make sure, kind of to your point, but maybe for another reason, that any legislative action that had happened at the state level, follow through into your local ordinance. In this case, you're kind of planning and more development related. We will also look at it in the context of any court case findings, holdings. You know, a few years back, there was a Supreme Court case that certainly impacted probably ninety-nine percent of the sign codes across the country. So we'll, you know, we're always looking for things like that, whether it's the state legislature district or Supreme Court, and then just overall invest practices. So if you, if you have kind of done that workshop, you know, every year or so, you'd probably stay in pretty good shape. You don't need a major overhaul. But what I also always say is, your staff knows that's when something's not working. Whether that should be changed from one thing to another is a whole different discussion, but before I joined Boltman Bank, I was a public sector planning manager for many, many years for city in Iowa. And I promise you, that was back in paper days, but my, my copy of the zoning ordinance was scribbled with all kinds of things, like, people come in asking us this all the time. It's a bit ambiguous. This is the consistent determination we've been making, things like that. So you want to go through and clean those up. So things that are coming up repetitiously that are either maybe gray areas, or maybe your code is completely silent on a question that you're getting that, you know, is walking in routinely. The thing about building materials would be an example. So just things like that could be completely missing. So the combination of kind of the overall mess practices and legal aspect, and then really getting in there locally to understand what has been working or not working. We also don't want to fix things that aren't broken. So the pieces of your code that are serving the community well, we don't want to undo them simply because that's what I, as your planning consultant, say is the modern thing to do. There might very well be reasons that that should stay in place.
How long do you think, I know that this is six months, but so what's your typical length to review? And then who was the last community? Or do you do that, do you guys, are you guys contracted to do this regularly for cities or? We are, or, okay, so where are some of the cities if you can share?
Yeah, so the magnitude of the zoning code update could vary wildly. Sometimes it is a couple of sections. Sometimes it's creating a new district for someone. Sometimes it's doing a little bit of a hybrid between a form-based code and a more traditional kind of code. So it really depends on that spectrum. I would say in a project like this, we'll go pretty fast the first couple of months because we're going to be doing a lot of our own review research. You know, we're going to go through and mark things up. So that happens pretty quick. Then what needs to happen is, is breaking it down with your commission or your stakeholder group, and that sometimes takes more time. Just the understanding, understanding why would we want to change this? Why wouldn't we? And working through that. So that, that can take some more time, and then finding the right solution for, for Windsor Heights as a community. So that is the part of that can be something.
So six months, it's realistic?
Six months is just, no, no, six months, I think, is realistic. If, if everything just worked right and perfect world, we could probably do it in four months. My experience is that nothing ever in that realm of work happens that way, so I don't want to overpromise and underdeliver. Some of the communities that we routine, we routinely do planning and planning services in many communities in Iowa and Minnesota. Most recently, in Iowa, they've been a little bit different. I've done some overlay district creation in Hiawatha for an area they were doing a major redevelopment project in, but we adopted some new code there. I've done some hybrid work in Marshalltown. That was kind of an interim step, and now we've done a complete code rewrite with another partner. It was a very large project. We do day-to-day planning services, also Marshalltown, but in many communities in Minnesota, and we, I'm actively working on two other code projects that happen to be in Minnesota right now. So it really just depends, but we, we do this kind of a lot. For large communities and small.
I just have a question for Dennis. Is this something that we should be bidding without? Or is this something that we have that I guess, or is that an air question? I don't know. Just like, is this something we should have in our? No, no, the answer to that question.
It's it's certainly not required because it's a professional service. So you don't have to bid out for engineering architects. I don't know, I, I have a purchasing policy, but I don't know that there's an equivalent for professional services in the city.
I think that in the purchasing policy, it's exactly as you described it, that. Being professional service is not required to be bid out and our typical practice is if the, our current contractor for engineering and engineering planning typically go together. If the proposals that are submitted are reasonable and within the market as we experience it, then we will accept that as kind of our litmus test. If however, the the proposed hourly rates for this work are wildly different than what other communities are experiencing, then we would then go out to bid and see what comes back. But what Rose has proposed is very reasonable and falls in line with what we already have with Justin and the engineering side of it. So we're very comfortable with the rates that they've submitted.
And I, and I would say that we have seen it. More often than not, that you would go with somebody who's familiar with the city. So I think Justin probably brings a lot of insight to some of the problems that have already come up in the city and and things that he sees on the regular. So do you think there's an added benefit?
No, I was just, I was just curious. Not that I was suggesting that Dennis was doing anything wrong. I just was. I wasn't Dennis. I was just asking my own brain here. I was like, is this something we should be going to bed maybe too many fitting in my life these days, but I needed to.
I have the same question.
The great question.
Thank you.
And to be brutally upfront about this, when we have a site plan that's submitted to us from an Alvin's or a. IV, Rose has been part of that team that has reviewed the planning side. On that small little portion of planning. So we've got Justin, we've got Rose, we've got Chad, we've got a safe building, we've got Dalton that have been on that team that have been reviewing the site plan. So Rose is well familiar even with the most recent projects.
Thank you for answering my questions.
In a non defensive way. Did I ask for a motion?
No.
Motion. So we're sorry, continuing two things. I use the power of Google to search. Sort of around for things that have been done like this recently. The most recent thing I could find was in Charles City, which is, I think maybe around three thousand people larger than us. And there were five bids. The highest was a hundred and sixty five thousand dollars. This is to review their zoning code. The other four averaged out to about forty five thousand dollars now back in March of twenty twenty. So I would say we're coming away with a warranty here. Second thing, I would say we probably do need to have a work session, planning and zoning board of adjustment, input from the economic development committee. If we are spending this money and we want to talk about every issue that's come up in the past five years via building conformity, brick, brick conformity, sign conformity, parking space requirements, design standards. Things that have been mentioned to me over the years is we have sort of an inconsistent fence code. Is there a room for a recreational vehicle ban? I don't anticipate that to be controversial. But it's, I think we need to have this meeting so that all of those things can be brought forward as ideas and then presented. Not necessarily advocating for them, but I'm sure over the, you know, five, six years or so, every single person on this council or up here has heard. A a comment or a complaint about our zoning code. So. All I could hear should be put forth. Further discussion.
That within this couple of work that's been outlined here. Come on down, Rose.
You should have never left.
Okay. So the way that I do have it scoped right now is that. The primary stakeholders for the purpose of thing of kind of the day to day working is the planning commission, this group. City attorney. We, I have not explicitly scoped a workshop, but I think that. If we are open to, I can change it to whatever you want and it will be added in one more meeting, but I think if you are open to doing. A joint session, if if there is a reason, if there is no reason why we shouldn't entertain like a joint planning mission. Council work session, then then there's absolutely nothing that really I would say needs to change. If you want them to be explicit and separate, then just for timing. And time hours for other staff beyond myself, I think we would need to tweak it a little bit. I'm happy to look at it either way for you. But it it's common in both places. But again, I think if we're okay with doing it jointly, then nothing. Needs to change cost wise. I could certainly do a little amendment for it to explicitly say that, but. For my own.
Administration's point of view, I like to address those issues when they come up. So when the council makes a definitive. Decision that we want to have a work session, say. In four weeks to talk about all of the sections that have accumulated to that point in the work. Then it's easy for me to go to Rose, get a cost for that meeting, approve that and schedule it versus going through a rigmarole of. Doing public change orders of large quantity. So we can do those as we need it.
Sure. I think Mike's question though was about whether or not we needed to do an initial.
Yeah. Yeah. I mean, just like an intro. I'm not saying council needs to be involved at every, I mean, but you know, just like an intro, here's all the things that we've heard in five years about, you know, things we would, we would like you to address. And then at that point, I, I'd.
Yeah. Well, one thing I might suggest that that's very much helpful. Honestly, getting that from any number of sources, however, that would come to us would be great. One thing that we could consider doing that some communities prefer is. That we as your consultants would hold and host a public input session. It would not be a public hearing. It would be a meeting open to the public. There would be no role formally for the commission, the council or any other entity. And that is a listening session which we would facilitate. We would work through the programming of that. And then that's very helpful to our work and we can also report back. To you, to the commission, to others with what we heard that night. That's also very common. We did that in Marshalltown. We do it in a lot of places. So. Maybe, maybe that may actually be a more. Productive way than to do that larger input session like that in front of an appointed or elected body. I don't mean that in any disrespectful way. We just find some cases that. It's more interactive that perhaps sometimes we will get feedback that may not happen in another form. So I leave that up to you. That would be my recommendation. We want to go that way. But again, we can modify the scope to formulate that.
Just to clarify though, that from the moment we kick off this program for the for the six months that we're doing it, any comments that are submitted from. Counselor Skiris or someone that lives in just one, you know, house that they have problems with defense. Regulations, any comments that are submitted will be brought in and directly given to our consultant so that. She can present those to the planning and zoning commission for their consideration. And even if the planning and zoning commission says, well, you know what? We like it the way it is. The council will be privy to all those comments. So they'll understand, maybe we want to do something different. So. Even if we kick off and do a, a launch, maybe at the Kennedy Center where we say, come on in and give us your. Comments about the point, the zoning code. All through there will be receiving comments and we can do that through social media. We can do that through the newsletter. We can, we can talk about that at council meetings and get an update on how it's going. So that people in the community understand that their comments are valued and we need to hear from them.
I know we've done those listening posts, if you will, in the past, and I know they've been well received and I think we've had really good success with. With those and with different products that we've done in the past. So I I do think.
If we did a separate meeting like that initially, then yes, I would like to. Modify it ever so slightly, just with some public engagement hours separately. It's just a different kind of meeting preparation as well, different kinds of exhibits and. Things to make it really useful. So we we would need to add a few hours for.
Is that something that we would have to approve or is that something that Dennis can approve because it's under X amount of dollars? How does that work?
I would suggest the council approve the contract as presented this evening. And then with the understanding that that kickoff meeting will be organized with staff and I'll approve whatever hours have to be added, which wouldn't be that much.
Is when we do an event like that, we bring a few more staff so that it's well, the public, yeah. So it it just tweaks it a little bit.
That was kind of more of a learning question too, by the way, not anything else. I just wanted to know the answer to the question for future reference.
Council, any further discussions?
Susan Skiris.
Yeah.
Joseph Jones.
Yes.
Michael Libby.
Yes.
Lauren Campbell.
Yes.
And Teresa Hines.
I see consideration of proposal from Boltman Bank for the provision of professional planning services per the attached professional services agreement. And authorize Mayor Jones to sign all related documents.
Second.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This item is similar to the previous item in that it would provide a professional planner to. Under contract for projects that come to the city, development questions, zoning code questions and anything other that, anything. Else that would fall under that purview of a professional city planner, which we do not have on staff. Currently, these tasks are being handled between the city administrator and the public works director as the time allows from their other duties. This is not an ideal situation for a community that wants to be customer friendly for developers and property owners and support of economic development activities. And the contract will be a pay as services are rendered similar to how we manage our current engineering services contract. And with that, Rose is here. She works for Boltman Bank. Go ahead and answer your question.
I guess my first question would be so. If, I mean, let's say all the. Are we as the city going to pay for this or is this, if people are asking you questions or Rose questions? Then Rose's charges would go back to the person that's asking the questions or is this like, because this is the city that, you know. Kind of this is their job to do, for lack of a better term, then the city will be paying that out of our own pocket. How does, how would that work?
It's a combination of all of that. So when we have a site plan review as an example, there is a site plan review fee that a developer has to pay. And it's basically an attempt to recover one hundred percent of the cost associated with staff review. As you can imagine, complicated site plans will take a whole lot of time, well beyond what we're recovering money for. If somebody were just to call and say, hey, what's going on with the fence rules? My neighbor's not abiding by them. And one of us has to answer those right now or go out to the site. There's no mechanism for us to recover that cost for that staff person's time. So that would be a combination with Rose taking that work on. She would answer those questions when they come in. Most often they would be without any kind of fee structure attached, but when we have a site plan submitted for the city's. Consideration, then that cost will be partially covered under the current fee structure. So what does safe building do? Safe building will do like the building permitting work. So the mechanical and the electrical review, the developer or the site plan contractor has to come in and. Submit for a mechanical permit that then safe building will go out and confirm that it's all being construction, constructed according to. A state code. And their fees are covered under the building permit, like the mechanical permit.
And that's one hundred percent covered, isn't it?
That's our plan. That's what we try to strive for, but unless you're always updating your fees every year, there's going to be the opportunity for that to fall behind. And we're just doing our best to try to keep up with that. I don't think that our fees before this year, I don't think our fees have been updated. You remember Travis, when was the last time?
It's, it's been a while, but um, right now, like I do the end of the processing for the billing permits. So then they'll have their fees on there and then that's what we bill to the builder. Is are the, are safe buildings fees. So.
So will the questions continue to come to the city and then direct those to Rose and her team or? I just, I'm hoping that for Rose's sake, that her contact information isn't on our website, that she's getting questions that really shouldn't be directed her way. So it's a process, I guess, is my question.
Yes, most of those questions today, even if they're going to go to our engineer for which are rare. They would come to the city staff first and then we would decide, because we may be able to answer the question like that.
Yeah.
So we don't want to bother and incur an additional expense with Rose or Justin or any contractor. If we can answer those pretty quick and Travis is pretty good and myself and Dawn are pretty good at answering those questions. Further discussion, questions?
After this, you're rethinking.
Roll call.
Susan Skiris.
Yes.
Joseph Jones.
Yes.
Michael Libby.
Yes.
Lauren Campbell.
Yes.
And Teresa Hines.
Yes.
Five D, consideration of resolution number twenty twenty two, twenty six, a resolution authorizing the city of Windsor Heights, Iowa to submit an application. For funding from the federal community project funding program or the partial funding of reconstruction of seventy third street.
Motion. Second. Does anyone need to say anything or?
No.
Okay, cool. All right. Just a question. First part of this, it says, community of forty nine hundred residents. Is that accurate?
No, we're about fifty two.
Fifty two, right? Yeah. Sorry. No, I mean, no, I still don't know. Cause the census beneficial release yet. I have numbers, but. So. What's our official number? Fifty two fifty is what's posted on there.
Unless he's on your team.
Where, I'm sorry, where is that? The first to pair, whereas. The city of Windsor Heights is a community of forty nine hundred people. Fifty two, that's the new, that's what's going to add to where the official signature from the mayor.
As long as Ms. Hines and. Amending their.
Yes.
Yes.
All right. Further discussion. Here we go, Rose.
Susan Skiris.
Yes.
Joseph Jones.
Yes.
Michael Libby.
Yes.
Lauren Campbell.
Yeah.
And Teresa Hines.
Yes.
Five E, consideration of resolution number twenty twenty two, twenty seven, a resolution authorizing the application for one third fund for. At grade rail crossing on seventy third street motion.
I do have a question. So is this? Does this? Have, will it have any impact or can we negotiate if we're coming up with some sort of cost sharing with the railroad, the opportunity to, for pedestrian crossing? Let's leverage.
So just as a side note, I was listening to Zoom call out the hallway. This isn't on an extra face. You can't hear it. So just link forward when you're talking into it. So for our seventy third street phase two, we'll be able to realign the road and shift. So for our Seventy Third Street phase two, uh, we'll be able to realign the road and shift it one way or the other. And then I think, yeah, we'll get one there. But we can ask him, sure.
Well, I think that that needs to be part of whatever we're proposing. We have a dirt path over there that is unsafe for people. Um, you've all heard my wheelchair story, snow, person in a wheelchair on the road. I like got them off of the road and I mean, because they could not go anywhere was embarrassed and I'm sad. That is our situation. We know it's not safe. We see people on that dirt path is.
Sorry, I agree with you. Typically, the railroad does this. It's a 10% global responsibility and the railroad does not share that 10%. If I brought it to you guys and it was 90% safe, 10% us, 0% them on their railroad, what going to happen? So they are contributing more than they usually do, but I will ask them. So you gotta see, we have better working relationship right now.
It's also important to have an actual number and a specific plan, I think, from the design work to be able to go and make a pretty aggressive ask of the railroad. So when we get this approved and filed and signed and all that, we're also going to be undertaking the design of base to after sixty eighth street design work is done. And when we have that detailed cost break out for what the pedestrian facility should look like from whoever the engineer is, then we'll have a real good number that we can go past the railroad for the contribution.
Fantastic. Well, I think my bigger issue is just the fact that we get a, it's less about contribution, more about them.
Letting us.
If you will. Working with us to make sure that we can have some sort of pedestrian walkway there. So that's what I'm looking for is really cooperation than a dollar figure. Awesome. Thank you. I couldn't miss the opportunity to roll with them.
He used his hand, so he was successful.
Any further discussion on council?
Susan Skerries.
Yes.
Joseph Jones.
Yes.
Michael Libby.
Yes.
Lauren Campbell.
Yes.
And Teresa Hines.
And five F, consideration of end loader purchase.
So I would move to approve the repairs for the current machine.
Second, the amount of.
Six thousand one hundred twenty three, right? And then
actually.
There's like sixteen thousand.
I know for no more than sixteen thousand.
That's sixteen.
Not to exceed sixteen thousand.
Dalton, were you speaking or Susan, were you speaking on this?
I'm, am I speaking on this? Do you want me to?
I have.
Yes.
She was going to speak on behalf of the staff.
Please.
So on the twenty third of March, the Public Works meeting met to discuss the purchase of a new end loader. Uh, the committee was not involved in looking at the specs or deciding like what size front end loader should be used uh, for for the purchase. The choices given to the committee was we were cho, we were to choose between five end loaders that appear in the summary of bids. They also appear, I think, index a specification comparison that kind of breaks it out a little bit more. Um, there are some committee members that wanted to know the approximate cost to fix the items that were broken or in need of repair on the current John Deere four 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 H end loader that has only about just under twenty nine hundred hours of usage on it. Just so everybody knows, that breaks down to about one hundred and thirty one point eight hours a year or two point five hours a week. Um, there was discussion within the committee on why three front end loaders were removed from consideration because not one of the five front end loaders that were quoted passed the specifications. There were eighty five, I think, somebody wanted to know. Um, one member thought that we should stay with John Deere, even though that was the highest bid, just because we'd had success with the John Deere end loader. So we kind of talked about the specifications and how Dalton came up with them. Um, we were kind of told that this is what Urbendales Public Works Director used uh, when they purchased their end motor back in like twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen. Uh, the committee asked what the public works actually use the front end loader for because, but like me had zero idea. So Dalton was kind enough to explain that the front end loader helps to pick up uh, snow from the roadways when there's significant snow, like on university with the new parking, whatever you want to call them. Um, the front end loader also has been used uh, once in Dalton's time um, as he attempted to get logs out of the creek when there was a log jam back on Walnut Creek. He said that the front end loader didn't have the power needed to pick up the logs, so he went into the creek and saw them down into manageable size. This happened once in the time that he's been with the city. Staff use the front end loader to pick up dead animal carcasses, pick up brush from the trails and use it to move salt into the trucks for use like dump truck, you know. Did I miss anything?
Uh, no.
Um, the committee ultimately directed Dalton to have a diagnostics test completed on our current end loader, which was performed by Murphy's in Des Moines. On the thirteenth of April, uh, the members of the Public Works Committee met via Zoom. There were six of us present, Mayor Jones, Dave Burgess, Dalton, John McKee, and myself. Um, we had four people that were not present. We had a three to three vote for repairing, purchasing the new end loader. The committee met again to receive, uh, to review what the diagnostic tests performed showed. According to Murphy, there were four items that needed to be repaired. And I kind of had those printed out for you, and they are in front. I don't know if anybody out here needs to look at them. Um, but they say Murphy and they have kind of everything that needs to be repaired. So that's uh, replacing hydraulic pressure reducing manifold, replacing, replace a leak at the orbital valve, reseal the leaking bucket cylinder and replace the starter. So the cost for those repairs are sixty one twenty three. There was a split between the repair side and the committee of the the committee and the purchase of a new front end motor side. The purchase side feels that there, this is a twenty two year old piece of equipment. There is no guarantee that the sixty, the sixty one hundred will repair the items that are failing. It also does not take into account that the transmission and engine are twenty two years old. When you need the front end loader, you need it, and you can't wait around for parts to come in to repair um, or you know, to to work on the labor. They feel that fixing this front end loader might nickel and dime the city, so the money should be spent by purchasing a new front end loader. Mayor Jones brought up the fact that this front end loader is on the equipment revolving plan for replacement. It was on the the plan for replacement last year, but Dalton waited to replace it because there was still function in the front end loader. Mayor Jones said that we plan our equipment replacement so that we aren't having to purchase same ambulance and a front end motor all in the same year. The repair side feels that by adding in the changing of the wiper blades, the radiator hoses and clamps that are aged and at the point of being end of life changed, the brake valve pressure should be looked at. Um, but Dalton thinks that maybe fixing the hydraulics would fix the brake valve pressure. Uh, then the last repair would be to the drive shaft U joints at a cost of about eight thousand. So this brings the total to fix the front end loader with items that need or should be done for safety reasons to just about sixteen thousand one hundred seventy three dollars. Um, there is nothing that says that by purchasing a brand new piece of equipment that it will be available when we need it because even new pieces of machinery break down. Um, so kind of what doesn't appear in the council package is what I provided you. Um, I did send it out to you, but I didn't send it out until late. So, um, the committee received these emails, this email. There were ten diagnostic tests done by Murphy, and that is the second page that you have, um, says, you know, test performed. So it talks about the cycle times. I'm not going to read through that all because there's a lot involved in that. But um, the only two things that on this, the ten uh, points that were looked at that need to be changed are kind of what Murphy is is saying to to do. So it was brought up at the meeting, questions of how an end loader with only twenty nine hundred hours on it was in this condition. This happened before Dalton got here, but the committee is strongly suggesting that there be a maintenance plan put in place with the purchase or replacement of the end loader. I would like to see a maintenance plan for all of our vehicles, including this John Deere or the new piece of equipment within the next two months. Just me personally. And then, um, on a side note, we kind of have asked for um, information about the two new um, international dump trucks that we use as snow plows, uh, were requesting some information on their repairs and maintenance since they come up here next year on the ERP, and we kind of want to get a head start on that. So I think that kind of explains what happens. Uh, it was a split three, three with three people saying that we would like to repair, three people saying we would like to replace.
Thank you, Susan. Further discussion on council.
Mr. Rick, can I get some, give some background on this purchase so that I think everybody's clear on the process that's followed and the process that we're going to continue to follow in the future? Uh, the capital um, plan includes uh, the ERP which the council approved, and this piece of equipment was included for replacement, as Susan said last year. And in typical Dalton fashion, he figured out a way to put it off a year because that's what Dalton does. If you work with Dalton on a daily basis, you understand that if you ask him to go out and purchase a new TV, he'll try to figure out how to find a refurbished TV somewhere to save a nickel. So, uh, that's one thing that I appreciate in Dalton, and I always have to uh, counsel with him. So when this year comes around and Dalton enters my office and says the front end loader is scheduled to be replaced, I could probably make it work for another year. I said, we've done that once already, so I want you to proceed with soliciting cost proposals for replacement. Let's see where we're at. When he had the proposals, I gave him the green light, directed him to move forward with presenting this to the public works committee. So, uh, I'm very happy with the process that we followed. I'm happy with the involvement with the public works committee. It's a very valuable step in the process to get that input from that committee. And uh, so the result from this evening and the motion that's out there right now and uh, or the total replacement of that piece of equipment totally comfortable either way the council chooses to go because we'll make it work. With regard to the reasons for moving forward with replacement, this was my call, and my reasoning was this. In a municipal government, GFOA best practices are to schedule and plan for replacement of equipment so that you uh, can, as the mayor indicated, you can plan for that financially, but also before the equipment fails or becomes too expensive to fix, and you're behind the eight ball. So we have developed an ERP. It's a comprehensive ERP, and the council has approved that. When you consider in municipal government, whether you choose to defer these kinds of expenses, you go through a, at least I do, through a calculation that says is there a better project that is in more deserving need for that money? Is there a competing project for that money? Or do you have a future revenue picture that is negative that would cause you to want to pull back on your expenses now to preserve those funds for future days where you might need them in a more prioritized way? Neither of these reasons exist right now with the city of Windsor Heights. We have the funds in the ERP. The council has been very deliberative in putting those monies towards these infrastructure needs. So we felt comfortable with going forward with the replacement of the equipment today. The negatives, however, on deferring the expense here. The cost of replacing the front end loader in three or five years instead of today is going to be significantly higher. I don't think anybody can dispute that. The credit for trading will be significantly lower. I don't think anybody can dispute that either. And the city must not budget annually for repair maintenance for the next three to five years for that piece of equipment, whether it gets used or not, because that's one of those pieces of equipment that is considered a standby piece of equipment that when you need to start it, it must start. So with an older piece of equipment, it will be more prone to breakdown and be less reliable as time passes. And in my judgment, I didn't want to put the city in a position where even though we could put the money towards maintenance and save and defer that cost, I wanted to make sure that we had the right piece of equipment to serve the citizens of this community. So the reason the communities have uh, these ERP plans is to replace equipment on a very deliberate and planned way. I think this would have done that. However, as I stated earlier, uh, whatever the council's choice is this evening will be fine and will work for the community. So with that, I'm here to answer any questions. Dalton can answer any of your questions as well.
So I guess for me, I um, I actually did look today. I contacted Case because I have always been asking why we went with this big the the case, um, six twenty one G. There is a a case, a smaller one, that is about thirty, forty thousand dollars less. Um, I've taken upon myself to look at the John Deere a uh, the four 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 H that we currently have to look at the horsepower that that had compared to the horsepower that the rest of the items that we are looking at have. So it's kind of like an in between this case five two one G is an in between. And so I've I've always questioned why we haven't looked at that, why we we have never been given a proposal, and I think Dalton will admit that every meeting I have have asked this. So I called today to just, you know, ask, talk to Case. Um, and you know, this is, they they quoted me a hundred and thirty to a hundred and forty thousand for that. Um, the five two one G, and they said the five two one is a four cylinder with the six two one being a six cylinder. But if you put on the tires, uh, different tires, then that five two one will act exactly like the six two one. Um, there's a difference of seven to eight thousand dollars pound of weight, which will also help with you know, the the mobility and in everything else going on. So, um, I guess for me, I am completely for the repairs, and I think that that's what we should do. But I also question why we haven't looked at at other choices that you know, I I know that the Public Works Committee has asked different, um, you know, about different. I don't know what they're called, if they're called steer loaders and like what they're called, but there there was questions on that, if there were other products that we could use. Um, just because we are not using this, the, I mean, it literally, we have used it two point five hours a week um, for twenty two years. So that to me doesn't say that we are using that consistently or, you know, a lot. So that was my reasoning for, um, for going with the repair. Also, Thomas has a, you know, a lot of, um, he has dealt with a lot of uh, repair issues in his career. And he actually talked to the mechanic at Murphy and kind of received information from him. So that is kind of where I sit with with this, um, that I would much rather do the repair, and just because we have the money in the equipment revolving or, you know, the ERP, or just because we have planned it in the capital improvement plan, doesn't mean that we need to use it. You know, I mean, I could plan every ten years to buy a new truck, but if my truck is still running, I'm gonna, you know, try to get another five years out of it because I don't want to pay it. So that's kind of been my thought process on on why we would go repair.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
Yeah, I was, I was seen in favor of purchase, and I was simply in favor of the purchase of public safety concern. Uh, we have fifty two, a hundred and fifty residents in our community, and we need something to work immediately. I think our option to have a new piece of equipment would serve the citizens of Windsor Heights better. Uh, should we have to pull that old piece of equipment, even though it's low on hours, out of the shed? And uh, and it doesn't work or something else breaks on it when it needs to work. Uh, that would be detrimental, I would think, to to our community. Uh, but you know, that's, that's just the opportunity that we do have a system where we're supposed to be able to replace our equipment on a regular basis. It would seem to me that that's money well spent. We spend sixteen thousand dollars to fix this thing. And then in a couple of months, we need to spend another couple of thousand dollars to fix it, or if it fails, I think that's a, that's a real concern that I would have. Thanks.
Um, Joseph, Lauren? Not to second on spot. How essential is it that we have this piece of?
So it is essential, but as we, as I've talked with Dalton, because I asked this question. He said, what happens if it goes down? What do we do? And Dalton's comment was, we can use the skid loader. We can use the skid loader to use it in its place.
For some of them.
First depending on the task.
So you know, like, I think the only task would be, it can't go in the water to pick out the log jam that has happened once in five years.
And that's maybe a little missing because I wasn't able to do the job. So I just haven't tried to do a job before. So it's like saying I couldn't afford to suit for the fort one time. So I haven't tried it anymore.
But how often do we have log jams? I mean, I, I guess I don't know. But you know, most of our jobs, most of our tasks can be easily done using the skid loader. So it might take them a little bit, it might take them two extra times to, to load the ice into, or the, the salt into the bucket to get it into the dump truck, but it's still going to get there. So it's not like we're not going to get the job done. We're just not going to get the job done with this piece of machinery. We're going to use the other machinery that we have.
So to put it into perspective, I had my guys haul material out of our lot over the winter and sweeping new concrete patches and stuff. And what should have been done on Friday, we just finished today at four thirty. So oh, you know, under ten minutes to load a truck, it's not a big deal. And it's a whole, a whole day. I have two guys working on it an extra day. So it's not insignificant. It's not, it's, it's not a huge deal, but it's not, it's not nothing either. So I mean, there's a cost.
I, I think what counselor scaries those is saying is that that delay is acceptable.
Yeah.
As long as we can save the forty thousand dollars or in this case, we're not spending a hundred and seven, a hundred and seventy thousand dollars. Instead, we're spending sixteen thousand. So if it takes a couple of extra days to do that and puts off other work, it's okay because we'll eventually be able to catch up.
Sure. So I mean, most, most, most of the tasks we, we can use another piece of equipment for. Is it going to be the best for it? No, but and you don't have the best piece for anything. So we just have to make it work, you know? Save work.
Dalton, to Susan's point, why this piece of equipment and not another smaller, different?
Sure. So it comes down to size of machine and type of machine. So what we have now is a John Deere four forty-four. There's a five forty-four, six forty-four, seven forty-four. The four forty-four is technically, it's classified as a small wheel loader. The five forty-four or the next equivalent to that is the case six twenty-one G. The next smaller from that's case five twenty-one. So like they all generally follow that same like increment. So before the city had this loader, they used to have a John Deere five forty-four. And just for what we do, like pulling logs out of the creek, pushing logs out of the way from the derecho or any other windstorm. We had a tree fall up by Clyde learning academy. I saw one of you guys up there anyway. You couldn't push that away. So then we had to get out there and chop it up into a bunch of pieces and then roll it away because we couldn't lift it up. And then I had to have a tree company come in and load it up with their big equipment. And so I had a pile of debris sitting on the school lot for eight hours. It didn't really need to be there. I guess that, that answers your question. So like the size, the frequency at which we use it, I don't think there's any disputing. There's not a ton of hours on it. But the type of work that we do with it is not terribly different than what Urbendale or West of Wayne does with theirs. So you're still loading salt. You're still doing the debris. You're still pulling stuff out of the creek. And then the type of machine, I mean, we, we could get a backhoe, but it's not going to eliminate the need for a loader. So when we put away salt in our bin, you have to literally do a wheelie. So you're pushing the salt up, dumping it and to get it all four hundred tons to fit in that, that shed, you have to push it all the way to the back, lift your bucket and then articulate it and go all the way up. So the bucket of that is up on the ceiling. Your rear end of the machine is almost hit the ground and you can't, you can't do that with a backhoe. So I mean, just for the sheer fact of being able to do what we do, that's, that's the machine for the job. I could use a backhoe, you're wrong, but it's not going to eliminate the need for an end loader and and the work that I will do at the backhoe or would need to do at the backhoe, I didn't plan that out. So I'll, I'll rent one if I need it.
The basic difference between the one that we expect and the smaller version that Susan said is basically what?
Horsepower.
Yeah, horsepower torque.
And then that kind of evens itself out when you take away the, the weight of the, the five two one G. And I mean, when I talked to the salesman, he said, you'd be, you would be fiscally smart to just go with the lower one and put tires on it. Then he also said in, there's a bunch of used ones, like there's a twenty eighteen for a hundred and six thousand with nineteen hundred hours on it. You know, so I, I guess do we need the brand new one when we literally have put a hundred and some hours on it a year in twenty-two years? That's just.
That's high hour in a short time though, isn't it? About twenty eighteen?
Well, you should really be able to get like fifty thousand hours in on a, a machine is what he said between thirty and fifty with, you know, fifty being kind of the middle grounds on things. That's how many thousand hours you're supposed to have or be able to get on.
Fifteen thousand?
That's what he said. I don't know. I mean, it's way more than what I've seen, but I, I saw, you know, a bunch of other ones that were for sale for, with, you know, like fifteen thousand, twenty thousand hours on it, but I, this is not my profession.
Yes. This, this proposal, either be it from you or from Dalton, your assertion to counsel is that this is the machine, one of these machines. This is the machine that we. Is that right? Correct. Okay. And we, we come to that conclusion based on our past use of the existing machine as well as what our neighbors are buying and using out in the field. And so we're very comfortable with the machine. It's a good price. It's a good bid. We're getting a good, good value on the trade-in on the one that we have. And if the council chooses this evening just to do maintenance this year and keep the current one, where we, we will reprogram that into the ERP for the council to consider next year. And then the council can have that, can make that decision on whether it's going to try to spec out a different model or not buy one at all, take it right out. That's a discussion for another day, but this evening we're still recommending purchasing the low bid. And if the council goes for just maintenance, we will do that. We'll reprogram the front end loader for future year ERP. Counsel, further discussion?
So I actually, so a couple of things. One, I look at the ERP is very different from the perspective that, that Dennis laid out. I think you need to look at the ERP from, and it should be planful from the perspective of ongoing maintenance and what the recommendations are, not just a date on what's the expected life or longevity of a piece of equipment. So my Iowa farm girl is coming out of me right now and I grew up on a farm where my grandfather who was blind fixed his own tractors. And so I learned from my dad and my family that maintenance is everything. I'm not sure and maybe I think Susan mentioned that maintenance, do we have any maintenance records or do we have a maintenance plan for our? Okay, we do. Okay.
We have a maintenance. We have a little one, but we're not on a contract that Murphy.
No, do you have a maintenance schedule for all?
We follow the P M C S, like manufacturer specs on it.
Okay. So I'd love to see our maintenance schedule for all of our pieces of equipment. And then and then, so I do believe, so like, for example, in my home, this is obviously just my personal being that you know, you don't skip an oil change for your car. You don't skip your tire change. You don't, I have a maintenance for, you know, my lawnmower and my snow blower and all of those sorts of things. I assume and hope that you do too for all of our equipment. So I guess my question is, is if this, the piece of equipment was, had been kept up to maintenance, which maybe it, based on the things that are being recommended, maybe it hasn't that we should start with maintenance, but then those decisions about what's on the ERP come with what is the potential longevity of a piece of, of, of equipment? Not just because it's in the RP. And so for those of you, well, maybe I don't know that any of you have been on here on the council with me. But we've had previous conversations about public safety vehicles because, just because they're in the ERP doesn't mean that they need to be replaced. And so Dalton, you probably remember those conversations. So I am a firm believer that the ERP has definitely has a purpose. I, I, and there've been, when I got here, we didn't have an ERP. So this, we've come a long way, right? It's like we didn't have a C I P. So this is good. We do put money into it and it's there for planning. But if you don't need to spend those dollars, it's just like somebody says, oh, there's a sale. We gotta go buy it. No, it's not a sale unless you need it. And I, I feel strongly about that. And I think our approach to just buying something because it's on the ERP is the wrong approach. And from what I understand, based on response and information that I've gotten from some of our residents who also sit on this committee, the residents who have not only expertise and experience, I, I think we need to appreciate and respect and value them. And I think that that's why I made the recommendation that I did. And that's, I guess, where I'm at. But I, I, I do have concern about maintenance of our of all of our equipment, not just public safety, but all of our equipment and that I would like to have a, a firm plan for ongoing maintenance for all of those things and making sure that we do definitely have a plan to address those.
So Dalton, we do have a maintenance plan and schedule in place on the front end loader.
We don't have a, we don't have like a contract in place. I know. When there's an issue that we can't fix in-house, we have Murphy cannot do it. So they'd like the John Deere dealer for that piece of equipment. But like for our dump trucks, I have them serviced and inspected every year before the snow season. Should we replace this? I fully intend to do that or even not replace it. Kind of been operating under the assumption this is supposed to be replaced for the last couple of years. So why am I going to keep throwing good money after bad?
Why wouldn't you have it checked to me? I mean, let's just like my car, I'm just keep driving until it's on tire blows. That makes zero sense to me. Sorry.
All right. Well, with that said, you know, there's also citizens on the public works committee who fully favor replacing pieces of equipment. As there is Mr. Libby, I don't want to speak for you, but that's your, well, you've already said. So, so you know, that's literally why it was a three, three split because I think it is a fifty fifty split on what we should do with this. Is there any input from public? I see you, Mr. McMahon. I know you spoke or we reviewed your email during the public works committee meeting. Is there anything? Any, any other comments from public on this at all?
My name is Thomas McMahon and I'm a resident here in Windsor Heights and I am on the public work committee. The thing that I want to add, which most of you spoke about is is not the age of the machine. It's the number of hours on the machine. And this type of machinery is operated on hours versus a car or truck or another vehicle on mileage. And with the number of hours on this machine, having spoken with mechanic that Murphy tractor, they said it's a repairable machine and you should get longer life out of a machine based on the number of hours that's on it right now and the number of repairs that need to be done that they propose in addition to four other items we're on, excuse me, we're on the list. I feel that doing those repairs and getting it back into running order will extend the life of the machine. It won't be a new machine, but it will be a machine that's operable and you can count on using.
Could you give Travis your next time? Did you ever give him?
Oh, twelve twenty-seven sixty-four street.
Thank you.
Just, so when we talk about extending the life of this machine, so I care, I said, how long are we hoping that's going to be for? So I'm just sort of asking that question anyway, like how, how long are we hoping that that's going to be for?
Well, I would hope at least five years. Oh, go ahead.
To answer that question, based on my knowledge and what Murphy tractor spoke to me about, if the tractor is maintained after it's repaired on a regular basis, you should give ten, fifteen years, twenty years. And I have to tell the council and, and Mr. Mayor that my past experience working for a caterpillar tractor dealer, we experienced machines that had over a hundred thousand miles, excuse me, a hundred thousand hours of running time on their machines that were repaired, but they were still running very good. So you can get a lot of life out of a piece of heavy equipment.
Hold you to it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Thomas.
I would just comment too that I, I've learned a lot. I've learned a lot in my time at Metro Race. And often bringing, we make, making lots of equipment purchases over the years and, and learn more of a ton during that time. And one of the things that I appreciated about that was you, you learn that large equipment does run on hours and that not only how important maintenance was, but that wanting to buy user equipment as well, but also that you can expect to get, if you maintain your equipment, you can expect to have them run longer and how important that is. So I just, you know, I hope the bigger thing that we take from this is, is that we appreciate and value the importance of maintenance and that, that we make sure that that's part of what we're doing for everything. You know, all of our equipment that we have in our community.
The motion was to repair in, in a amount not to see how much Travis?
Sixteen thousand.
Any further discussion on that motion, counsel?
If you add in the hundred dollar windshield wiper repair that I'm hoping that we can do, I think that takes it down to like sixteen thousand, twenty-three dollars. If my math is correct.
So what I have on my list was like the items from Murphy tractor, wiper blades, radiator hoses and clamps, the drive U shaft joints, the engine rotor mounts, and then the brake pressure valve replacement, if it needed to be replaced. For the total of those being fifteen, six, seventy-three. My math could be wrong. So we need to change and make it seventeen thousand, just.
Because what if we have to add oil?
And then, you know, we're, we're up at eighteen.
Or it has to be delivered or it has to be taken up. Right. Can we do twenty?
That's fine. I'm, I'm okay with that.
All right.
I amend my motion to twenty thousand dollars. I amend my second.
Well. Yeah. I'm having issues with this amending in seconds, obviously.
Any further discussion on that? Twenty thousand dollars not to exceed for repair. Here in the local.
Teresa Harms, Susan Scaries, Joseph Jones, Lauren Campbell, Michael Libby.
No. Item five G shared fire and EMS services discussion apply. I have this based upon a letter that was sent back in January. As I had mentioned in the memo, this has been discussed for the better part of the decade. The entire time that I've been on council has been mentioned before I was on council. It was negotiated and failed. You can read the city manager's letter here from Mr. McWellon and Clyde about what they are interested in. And so I am bringing this forward to council to gauge interest in this discussion. The item. The item or the consideration is um, whether or not staff can have these entry level discussions and potentially seek out a consultant. And I assume there are people who specialize in things like this. Their consultants are specializing. Yes. I'm sure we could find one. There's probably one at both of me. Yes. By doing so, I don't think anybody is committing to anything. But this letter was sent in January. This has been mentioned and talked about for a very long time. I think we should either respond to it affirmatively or negatively. And um, it is brought here to your attention because this is not necessarily all about money, although that is incredibly important. Uh, but the question is whether or not this could provide a greater level of service for our residents, which I think is the most important question to ask. And that's all I have to say.
Mr. Mayor, might I provide some context on this? This, okay. Uh, I initiated this after all, back in the fall. Uh, the mayor and the council during the campaign for council election shared an interest in revisiting the discussion about shared service as well, shared services relative to fire in EMS. Staff completed an analysis um, upon my request of what a shared services agreement would look like partnering with the city of Clye, which concluded that such an arrangement would end up costing the city more money. And that analysis was shared with the council. In my view, the key questions for this, as the mayor has started to allude to is firstly, is the current fire EMS service substandard in Windsor Heights? Second question is, is the city looking to spend more money to improve the level of service at this time? And then finally, will Clye agree to provide fire EMS services to Windsor Heights on a per capita basis that is less expensive than what Clye residents currently pay? And I would argue that if the answers to these questions are no, then I'm recommending we do not spend staff resources from our respective municipalities because it's not just Windsor Heights, it's also Clye having to devote resources to this. And at the same time, create an atmosphere of, an atmosphere of fear among our employees, employee ranks, or replay the experience of two thousand fifteen only to come to the same conclusion. Shame on the city of Windsor Heights the last time. If it happens and it repeats again, shame on the city of Windsor Heights again. Our ability to partner with our neighbors, I think would be degraded if we went through this process only to kill at the end. So I would argue that the, or recommend to the council that we choose not to pursue this at this time. However, leave our options open with the city of Clye, prove ourselves as a good partner over time. And if the city does come to the conclusion that we want a greater level of service or need a greater level of service, or even want to avoid buying a new fire truck at some point, and see that as a viable option that we take that mantle up again at that time.
Dennis, can you say your three, the three questions that you had? Um, like, is the current fire EMS subs, providing substandard? I missed the second one, I think.
Is the city looking to spend more money to improve the current level of service?
Okay. Thank you.
And just as an aside, I wanted to commend Chief McCluskey. He did an excellent job in putting together that preliminary analysis for the council. Obviously, if we were to pursue discussions with Clye in a more detailed way, um, the chief would be spearheading that. And it would involve exactly what Clye sees as a contract for services. And I think what he's concluded is it would be very similar to what they've already engaged with the city of Urban Dell.
So I, I also commend the chief for this really detailed look at whatever cost, what the benefits would be with regard to shared services. And uh, actually sometimes some here, there would be a loss of funding uh, to the city of Windsor Heights. Um, I, you know, I just need to echo Dennis's concerns. If, if indeed we move forward with shared services uh, with the city of Clye and we find this doesn't work, or there's something amiss and we have to restart uh, our own fire department and EMS services, that's going to be extremely costly. The second thing I think is really more important is that as we look at our staff, it is far easier to retain a good staff than what it is to replace staff. Every business person should know that, that when you have a well-well machine and things are working well, uh, to suggest to the staff that perhaps we could do better or different if we contract those services out to another party, I think uh, would play ill with the people that are currently on staff. And, and so I, I would echo our city administrators' concerns about that. I applaud the chief with his detailed response. And I hope that you've had a chance to really dig into that um, document. And uh, so that's where I would sit, Mr. Mayor. Thank you. Anyone else?
I've heard this since before I got on council. So this is the ongoing, I have heard of it, I think, just about every conversation. Um, and I thought we already talked about this, but that's why I was confused as to why it's back on our agenda. I think it's really important to understand that, that as outlined in the client's um, letter, that this would be contracted services. So I think we need to not frame it as shared services because it's not shared services, it's contract services. And that's very different. And so um, I just, I think it's time to just put this to rest, to put this to bed for now. Um, and um, and move forward it. Cause I think we've, we've already accepted Chad's last report and so.
One word that is not discussed, I believe, in point by the council, it was on the agenda. Heard this part of the city agenda. Okay, um. Susan, Joseph, Lawrence. Okay.
I think.
I consider the matter closed then. Can I? If you'd like. Reopen. I certainly appreciate the matter being closed. I would ask that we move forward and quit bringing it back up for any time in the near future. Because every time this comes up, my staff, uh, our staff, who works incredibly hard and is very dedicated to the city, uh, suffers anxiety. And that's not fair to them. So uh, from my perspective, I would ask there would be a council action that, that puts us to that at least for the foreseeable future so that we don't continue to miss this. That was the point of this conversation. So. We will consider the matter closed once again. Need further discussion, counsel?
I'd like to take the opportunity to.
I'll reopen if you.
You did ask for other additional conversations. Uh, when this came up in twenty fourteen, I spoke at a council meeting and I said, what would prevent fire from moving the fire station away from Harbaugh, which was timed to have the same time of service. And I was told, well, that's a silly one. And I would just like for the record for it to reflect. I told you so.
I'll need to see some video evidence of that.
I remember, I got the email actually.
And since we're still open, I have been, um, I've been a big, I have not ever been for the shared services or contract services. So I continue on that same path.
The matter is now closed upon, upon this council. Joseph, I mean, if you really wanna get in there, all four have spoken. All right. Thank you, counsel. Uh, that's right. Been talked about, talked about, and I talked about it certainly. Uh, I know council's position. The matter is closed. Report. Six A, uh, all right, I've got a list. Communications Committee met on the sixth. Uh, I'm gonna draft meds, I'll get me draft meds to council along with the uh, the rest of the report that I'm going to get you, kind of this in paper form. I discussed a communications plan, the newsletter, social media guidelines and my other things. Uh, last Monday, I've met with uh, Councilor Mandalong of Des Moines. We discussed a number of things, including Des Moines uh, the twenty-four seven clean electricity pledge. That's something I would like to see uh, discussed here at some point. MAC met on last Tuesday, that is, um, to give us a legislative update. Uh, things always are kind of coming and going. If Miss Harms, you can give us an update as to any other realistic legislation that might affect city business. Uh, Public Works met and discussed the in loader. I think everybody knows that right now. Uh, I attended a full county board of supervisors meeting or for staff discussion uh, where I spoke in support of the community ID program. I attended the Mid Iowa Association of Local Governments meeting in Johnston and heard from Billy Hunt of the cultivation corridor. Um, I met with Jeff Wood, planning his own AIGRABT. We discussed a number of things, including Lions Park, which is, was the place of our meeting. Uh, in short, we, and when I say we, that means elected officials and staff, we need to figure out a better purpose for that park uh, because it does not seem to have one right now. Uh, I attended the ribbon cutting for St. Vincent de Paul. I had great turnout. Thank you to Lauren, Susan, Director McCluskey for being there. Special thanks to Susan for posting a number of photographs of me with my eyes closed on social media.
Hey, I took out some.
It's too late. Special events uh, committee met last Friday. Uh, I've received approximately twelve submissions for the citywide garage sale. I think the first year there were fifty-two. Uh, but looking at my records, majority of entries came in the last couple of weeks. So there's plenty of time. The garage sale again is May fourteenth with the deadline for entries being May fifth at four thirty. I'm finishing, finishing up the bylaws or guidelines for special events and hope to have those up for discussion at the next special events meeting. Uh, assuming they're approved by committee, they'll be brought to council for approval. So we can have a more formalized and coherent uh, process for special events plan. I reached out to five or six Windsor Heights residents slash businesses about the At Hawk Park Project Committee last week. I heard back from three of them, both said yes. I'm meeting with Brian Sheriff of Colby tomorrow and on Thursday um, special events is meeting with the foundation to go through a storage locker that apparently has a long line of special events and curfew million inside of it. Uh, and I think perhaps you got what these that has, if anything. And finally, public safety committee meeting is on Thursday as well.
Um, I had two of the same meetings, MAC and vacations. Um, MAC legislative update was the shortest MAC meeting in my home of yours, macking. Of all my MAC committee meetings. Um, however, um, I would say for the most part, um, all of the not so great legislation that would have impacted our community, our, our, of Windsor Heights has, has died. So that's, we should celebrate those things. Um, probably the most significant one um, was um, a piece of legislation that would have changed billing requirements. And so that's, you know, been a hot kind of topic uh, here, particularly in the metro. Um, not something that um, I think has um, had a significant impact on our community, yet it would have impacted us significantly. And so that has actually been taken out of the bill it was in. I expect it to be um, back again at some juncture. But outside of that, I don't, there's not a lot of significant pieces of legislation that impact us directly. Um, however, negotiations are ongoing. The other big one, um, you know, that was out there was local office and sales tax. And that is, I mean, there's still a bill out there, but I don't think it's part of the final negotiations based on everything that's happened. Yeah. So I think that we put that to bed, but I expect that gap will be back again in future. I just said sessions where my member, reminding everybody that um, we do have um, an election this year. I know it's not for a long time, but um, we um, would have the same representative, but a different senator. So based on redistricting, so. And then communications committee, the only thing I would add is that Dennis is working on a newsletter. Um, and um, I had a question about City Bot, so we're reviewing that again in June. And um, the and Dennis is currently working on website updates as well as um, changes to the welcome packet or a welcome letter. That's all I have. Thank you.
I'm also gonna give my own machine before we.
Promise.
Uh, the special events committee met as mentioned. Um, the wanted to call out the calendar updates that Dennis's staff have made lately. So they've added a lot more events to our city calendar. Previously, they just had uh, council meetings, like funding and stuff meetings. And now it has special events, it has the trash and recycling schedule. So apologies to whoever has to go and update that with the date changes. Um, and uh, other special events as well. So hopefully that will, will get more people using the calendar and going out there to look for things that are happening in the city. And thank you to the Fire Association for hosting the Easter egg hunt on Saturday. That was a lot of fun. Um, and there was pretty good turnout considering how chilly it was outside. So um, thank you to the Fire Association.
Five thousand eggs is what they put out.
Mr. Living. Attended the uh, MAC meeting with the others here. It was a very short meeting, seven o'clock in the morning and we were done by seven fifteen, I think it was. That was a surprise. Also, the communications committee meeting and that. And Dennis has also taken a look at communication guides from various communities that are contiguous to the Des Moines Metro, to see what we may be missing. We could add to our guide. That's the last. Dallas, nothing for me. Scary.
Um, last Thursday, well, everybody kind of stole my thunder. So um, I had a Public Works Committee meeting. I don't know if anybody knew that. Um, I also attended the ribbon cutting at St. Vincent. Don't know if anybody knew that. Um, then uh, I had a special events committee meeting. Um, we talked about the Fall Festival as well as the Movies in the Park. We're still looking for sponsors for Movies in the Park. Uh, we've had a few step up already, but um, I'm still waiting to hear back from some of last year's sponsors. And I'm hoping to add a few more new sponsors as we move forward. Um, I'm just looking for, right now, I'm just looking for verbal confirmation from sponsors so that I can make sure that I include them in the advertisement for the events. Then also thank you to Firefighters Association for the Easter egg hunt. Hey, did you know they put out five thousand eggs? But the kids loved being out there and even though it was cold, there were lots of happy kids. And I even had my picture taken with the Easter bunny. So um, going out, I would like to say thank you to Chief McCluskey. Chief has been a rock star this last week with helping to make sure that advertising got out to school backpacks and out on social media about the Movies in the Park. Um, I'm, I'm not the easiest person to deal with, as Lauren will know also, because I'm not sure how to do all of that fun stuff on Canvas because that goes beyond what I really do. So um, thank you to Lauren and also to Chief for helping out with that. Um, I also just want to say thank you to Chief. Um, I noticed that on the city website, probably three weeks, four weeks ago, that uh, we were still showing that we were using Zoom um, for our city council meetings. So I said something to Chief and he immediately kind of changed that for us um, so that it didn't look like we were on Zoom at the time because we weren't. Um, see, uh, I have a meeting on Wednesday with Metro Waste. And then here is the reminder that the first movie will take place May sixth at Sunset. It's Back to the Future. Hope to see everybody there. Um, and finally, the foundation is looking, is still looking for ice cream social hosts for their ice cream social on June twenty-sixth. So if you'd like to be the host for your neighborhood, um, you can get in touch with me and I'll get you to the foundation or you can contact David Swartz and uh, Mark the President. So.
Dennis. A couple of things. The manager served a presentation from the uh, director of the airport today on the updated plan for the terminal project. Uh, as expected, the cost for the terminal project has escalated as time has passed and no decision has been made. So they're then now um, amending the plan so that they can afford what has been allocated so far. I will pass on that PowerPoint presentation to. I will pass on that PowerPoint presentation to all of you in my Friday email, so be on the lookout for that. Uh, demolition of Apple Valley One is expected to start this week, I had a conversation with Aldi's team this morning. And they are pushing hard to start construction second week in May. They want to be open and having people from Windsor Heights enjoy their, their uh new store there by Thanksgiving. The uh posting for the deputy city clerk position closes today, so now staff's responsibility over the next few days will be to read through the. Applications that we have and to schedule the first round of interviews, so we hope to have um some definitive direction on that by next week. With that, that's it, thank you.
Do they have a lot of applications, or do you not, are you not able to, to even tell? I don't know how that works.
I would say we had a really good turnout, uh, I was pleasantly surprised, um, last week when I was uh floating around in the pool. Checking my phone, um, it seemed like every other e- email was a notification that somebody was applying for the job on Indeed. So very happy with turnout, um, Rochelle has taken a look through, through the first wave that we received. And she's already said that we've got some good candidates that she thinks would be in good position.
Thank you.
Motion to adjourn?
So, second.
Susan Skerries, Joseph Jones, Michael Libby, Lauren Campbell, and Teresa Harms.